Okay, we'll call the meeting of the Board of Supervisors Tuesday, September 29th. The order, right? Say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Here. Go to your voter board and...
Where am I? Oh, I moved to the left. Thank you, Jim.
You gotta confirm, Kim.
I did.
We did.
Did I take it?
There. We have a quorum of 18 present. Three voters are absent for various reasons. Okay, is there a motion to present the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck, seconded by Dick Keynes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed. Resolution 2015, 74. This is to fill the vacancy in District Number 7. The person that I appointed is Helen Bacon, so I'd like a motion to approve that one.
It's on move.
Second?
Okay. Got them? Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one has passed. And then the next one is vacancy in District 18 by Steve Stones that I've appointed.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Dante, seconded by David Lino. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now Jill's gonna swear them in. You wanna come forward? What? Where's Helen? They're gonna be sworn in together.
I, Helen Bacon, who have been elected to the office of County Board Supervisor, who have been elected to the office of County Board Supervisor, District 7.
18.
In and for the county of Door.
In and for the county of Door.
In said county.
In said county.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office the best of my ability.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
Well, that's right. You're gonna be the chairman. Yeah, you'll be vice chair.
So help me God.
No, I don't want to be. Why would I want to be in the chair? Give me a minute. In case I dropped dead, then you can be. No way. Are you interested in something? Under correspondence in your packet or on your Zoom is unassigned fund balance? Does anybody have any questions? If not... I'm gonna nominate you. I'll take public comment after Dr. Raffin speaks, so he can come forward. Where is he?
Right.
Way back there. Come on forward and speak to us.
Jesus Christ.
He's the president of NWTC, by the way, for anybody that doesn't know it.
What a goddamn introduction. Isn't that... Is it? She better. Not good. Is that just one word or is that a hyphen? He deserves something better than that.
Well, thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk to you about what is going on at NWTC and what we've been able to accomplish over the last couple of years, or the last year. I have put packets in front of you. In those packets, you will find the budget for this year. You will also find an end-of-the-year report, a report on our student success initiative, as well as a lot of the work that we've done in student services, and just a variety of other information that you might find interesting. As you know, the tax levy was significantly reduced primarily due to the fact that the governor and the legislature now almost, well, a year and a half ago, the last budget and the budget we're currently in, decided that they were going to increase the amount of the state contribution in exchange for reducing property taxes. So it did not result in more money coming to the college, but it did result in about a reduction of about 50% in terms of the amount of tax that was assessed to property owners regarding supporting the technical colleges. So I think it's resulted in a fairer distribution of funds amongst the three parties that pay, which of course is the state, the students, and the property taxpayers. We moved from about 55% being paid by property taxpayers to less than a third now being paid by property taxpayers. Also, as you know, the ability to raise property taxes is frozen, except for the extent to which we can assess for any net new construction, which generally results in about $400,000 a year, at least so far. That's what it's amounted to. And you may also recall that we did pass a referendum in April of this year. That referendum was to increase the overall tax rate by about five cents on a thousand. Of course, we won't see that whole five cents right away because we don't borrow all the money right away. So that's essentially where we are from a financial standpoint. Of that referendum, about $4 million is being invested in the Sturgeon Bay campus as we continue to grow and expand programming there and do some significant renovation of that particular building. That's there. We have had quite a few, you know, accomplishments over the last couple of years. Our primary focus has been and remains ensuring the success of our students. Unlike in the past where we would consider success to be if any student that came in, took a course, passed the course, that was successful. We've challenged ourselves to say that every student needs to give a credential or a degree. And if we look at the data that is out there, the national and the regional data, it really shows that it's only once you've achieved that diploma or associate degree that you get significant increases in wages and that you're able to attain a job that is family-supporting. More and more jobs require that. You know, you can see numbers all the way from 50% to 90%. We're figuring about 70% of all jobs will require some post-secondary education. A third of those are four-year, and the rest would be primarily middle-school development, which is, of course, what we're engaged in and what we know needs to happen in our communities in order for them to be successful. So, you know, as we've gone about that work, we have achieved some national recognition. We belong to an organization called Achieve the Dream, focused on student success. You need to show three years of continuous improvement as measured quantitatively in terms of student's success in courses and in terms of student's success in graduate degrees. We have achieved leader college status, so we're one of about 90 colleges out of the 1,200 community colleges across the country that has achieved that status. And that's primarily due to the work that we've been doing there. A lot of that has to do not only with the excellent teaching that we provide and making sure that we're tied with the labor market, but also for the fact that we've increased the amount of tutoring that's available. We've increased the amount of academic coaching. We've taken our developmental education, which is education that's sort of pre-college. So, I don't know about you, but if I went back and I wanted to change careers, I'm sure I would have to take college, I mean, I'd have to take high school algebra over again before I could take the college algebra course because I learned it twice, once when I took it and once when my kids took it. And I am not going to learn it again when my grandkids take it. But nevertheless, what we know about people who are in developmental education is they have much lower completion rates. I mean, they're dramatically lower. Nationally, you would see something like 100 people start that need development or pre-college education, and only five will actually get the college degree. We've changed that significantly here, and we've shortened up the developmental education, combined it with the degree program itself, provided it in learning communities, and have made significant progress in terms of allowing students to take those courses, which most of them they don't want to take, and at the same time, take some of their program courses, which of course is why they are there. Last year, we graduated about 3,300 students. Our goal is by FY18 to graduate 5,000 students with degrees or certificates. Part of that initiative also is the development of what we call career pathways. So many of our programs now, we have gone into them and we said, "Well, if you complete six months, that can be, you can be awarded the certificate." However, we will only do that where we have shown that there are jobs that are associated with somebody who only had six months of education. And we will show the student, okay, in six months, and you've got this packet of education, this is what you can go out and find a job in, this is likely what you would earn. And we worked that all the way up through the associate degree. Our goal ultimately is to tie that back down into the high schools and tie that up to the universities. We've done a lot of dual-credit enrollment in high schools. All of your high schools here in this county are engaged in offering credits to students that get them, that they count towards their program at NWTC. And we continue to expand that. This last year, we gave out across the district enough credits that if students had come to pay for them, they would have had to pay $676,000. Those were credits that they did not pay for, nor that did the school pay for. They were provided through our transcripted credit program. However, lest you think that somehow we gave away all of that, our anticipation is those students, all of those students that I just mentioned that earned that amount of money in credit, came to the college. What we know is that students that come to the college with college credit already have a much higher completion rate. So those students are most likely to stay, persist, and complete their program, which of course, from a revenue standpoint, increases your overall amount of revenue. More importantly, we have students that are completing their degrees and their diplomas. We look to continue to develop that and increase the amount of transcripted and dual-credit programs that we have in this state and that we provide to our schools. As you may recall, Door County and Kewanee County were one of the institutions, counties, their schools that got us into the business of mobile education, and where we have a computerized, integrated manufacturing, mobile training vehicle that goes out to schools, is totally self-sufficient and provides four credits of training and machining. But through that initiative and the success of that initiative, we have now added to that fleet a mobile modular unit, a mobile modular trailer, which does all of the electromechanical and the first two or three courses that you would take in an engineering program. And we have begun to move in the same direction in information technology. That has made this education that is equipment-intensive, available out into rural areas, more readily than it is right now. To keep track of all of this, we needed to create an academic planning tool that students could use, and they could plan out what courses they would take, when and where, and how these would all connect, all the way through the university, if they wished to go to the university. Of course, that's not our major goal. Our major goal is to make sure that they are prepared for a career that will give them a family wage by the time that they leave our college. Nevertheless, many of our students do wish to go on to a university, and so we've made that pathway clear. The creation of that tool doesn't, that tool does not actually exist right now in the overall market. So we have partnered with the largest learning management system in the country called Blackboard. And Blackboard wanted to charge us $1.4 million to create this tool. And I said, "Well, yeah, but I'm gonna, we're gonna help you create this tool, and then what's gonna happen is you're gonna go out and sell it. Where do I get, what do I get out of it other than the tool itself? I might as well just wait for you to complete it." What we managed to do, and it's a rather unique arrangement, is to work a deal with Blackboard that over the period of time, we will receive back $1.4 million in specific services from them and use of that tool. And if for some reason, they do not use the tool, or they do not use it in a way that would generate the $1.4 million they have committed to paying us, the balance of the $1.4 million. So that's a rather unique arrangement that's allowing us to develop a tool that can be used both in the high school and the colleges and the universities as we take students through that complete and comprehensive career pathway. Likewise, we have looked at other ways in which to generate revenue. I suspect, like you as a county, that you're under very tight revenue controls and that you're having trouble meeting all of the ways in which you're going to do the things that you need to do. And so we've done that by increasing the amount of contract training. We're doing business. We served over 1,100 businesses last year. We served about 18,000 incumbent workers. Businesses paid for that training, and we, our goal is, so we did almost, well, we did $4.6 million worth of business. Our goal eventually is to achieve $10 million worth of business, which we believe that we're on track to do by 2018 or 2019. Likewise, we're looking at the intellectual property that our faculty and our students and our colleges are creating, and in some cases, instead of giving it away, we're offering, if somebody wants it, they can pay us for it. And these are the kinds of things, I think, that we're all gonna have to do is to be more creative in thinking about how are we going to support education and public services in the future, knowing that the amount of dollars that are gonna be available from the public taxpayer are gonna continue to be under stress. I am extremely pleased with some of the productivity improvements that we've increased, have put in place at the college. This includes a continuing reduction in the usage of energy. We reduced our usage of energy again. Every year, we've been doing that. We've reduced our energy usage by 6.7% in electricity and 7.6% in natural gas. And this is an area that we continue to focus on because it's one of the largest costs that we have outside of actually paying for personnel. And of course, on the personnel front, we continue to be looking at ways in which we can minimize our costs. We have engaged in a program of wellness and supporting wellness at the college, and at the same time, we've tied people's HRA scores, which are health risk assessments, depending on how well or not well you do on that, has an impact in terms of how much you need to pay towards your health plan, as a way in which to begin to encourage people to engage in healthier habits. Even though it does not seem to have worked with me, I still have not lost the weight that I need to lose. So we'll continue to work on that. And then we continue to develop and look at what new programs are needed in our area. We started software development and therapeutic massage program up here on the Sturgeon Bay campus, and of course, we have it down in Green Bay as well. We expect our engineering, two-plus-two engineering technology programs with UWGB got started this past fall, and they're doing very well. We have about, we have about 300 students enrolled in those kinds of courses that could take them in to the junior, senior. Not all of them will. In fact, most of them probably won't. But our goal is in the university, there'll be 75 students every year. This year, this first start of this year, we have 25 already in the university, so we're feeling really good about that. Likewise, we're developing a two-plus-two program in information technology. We are responsible, our college is responsible for developing the software development engineering two-plus-two with UWGB and UWO. So we continue to be attentive to what our labor market needs and hopefully providing great opportunities for our students. Lastly, I would say we've been very active on the grant market. Getting these kinds of national recognition really helps in that regard. Last year, we received $4.6 million in grants, really focused on responding to our student success initiatives, eliminating achievement gaps among certain populations, and developing our career pathways. I'll stop at that point and be glad to entertain any questions that you have. Dan told me that I was supposed to keep this, you know, under two hours, so I have an hour and 45 minutes left.
Are there any questions? I guess not. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
No, I forgot one very important thing.
Okay.
And as I forgot to introduce Jerry Warwick. Jerry is on the board representing Door County, and of course, he is the CEO of Door County Memorial Hospital. He's back there. He's currently chair of our board, and he gives me a hard time just about every single meeting, but I really like Jerry, so thank you.
Thanks. Rhonda, you wanna come forward and introduce the next speaker?
I'm introducing Chris Kulata, who is the Regional Director for the Northeast Region, the Public Health Department. He's out of the Green Bay office. And what he's gonna talk about is the assessment of the Public Health Department that occurs every five years. Every five years, the state comes in and they look at all the different statutes, and we have to provide evidence that we have met all of those statutes. We upload all kinds of documents to a website, and the state then reviews all that, and they come to the department then. And we had ours completely finished in May, I think it was May 22nd. And so he's gonna talk a little bit about the process and how that all occurred.
Thank you. Now that Rhonda covered everything I was gonna talk about, I'll make it short. So just real quick to back up, the Northeast Region for the Division of Public Health, it's a 17-county area. There is 19 local health departments in three tribes. And I have with me in the back Janet Lloyd, who's my public health nurse for the Northeast Region. And right now, we have two staff that help me, and we try and support our health departments the best we can. As Rhonda said, the 140 review, it's in state statute that every five years, we have to come out and we conduct a minimum compliance check. And we have to do this for all 87 Wisconsin health departments. And there's really two parts to it. One is every local health department in Wisconsin has to be at least a Level 1 health department. And that means that there's some basic, consistent quality of care that's afforded to our residents across Wisconsin, and so communicable disease would be one example. Then counties or local health departments can choose if they'd like to be a Level 2 or a Level 3 health department. And basically, a Level 2 or a Level 3 doesn't mean that they're better than a Level 1 health department. It means they offer more programs or services. So Door County is a Level 2 health department, and a Level 3 health department means they offer 14 programs and services. So as Rhonda said, her and her staff loved adding about 114 documents into SharePoint. And basically, we had a tool, and it's called the Level 1 Tool. And it's got some appropriate state statutes, it's got what evidence they provided. And we came and we spent about two and a half hours reviewing this document, but then we also reviewed their Level 2 programs. And so we had a discussion. And I gotta say, Door County is doing a lot of good things. And let me give an example. Public health has really changed. In the past, it was individual services. People would look at immunizations and they'd say, "Oh, that's something that the health department maybe was involved in." But there's a shift nationally and in Wisconsin that we're going away from individual services to population-based health. And some of the programs that Door County provides is fantastic. And I guess one example of that is the beach program. Is that really something, public health? I mean, you look at, the health department's involved in it, doesn't impact your tourism at all to have safe beaches? No, yes it does. But it's a great opportunity where the health department collaborates with University of Wisconsin Oshkosh, the EPA. You have a number of financial partners. You also have partners that, the DNR, the state parks. And so we were very impressed with the depth and the breadth of the program and working with the tourisms and the business and all the brochures and the hotlines and the information that they get out. But the other programs that they also have that we were impressed with was the Sharps Program. So basically, they had 10 locations where they can collect containers. And then they had a few others that, just to go through, Mental Health Focus, Nutrition, Prenatal Care Coordination Program, the Women Infant Children Program, Public Health Preparedness. And so we had a discussion about all of these, and we were very impressed by what Door County has done. And I think that's attributed to Rhonda's leadership. It's also attributed to her staff. And the other thing that we love about the 140 review process, I love when Board of Health members participate. And so Kathy Schultz, your Board of Health Chair, she participated. I think it's good, number one, for the state to interact with the Board of Health, but I think it's also important for the staff to interact with the Board of Health and just have a conversation. In some areas, I understand that the Board of Health might know everything that the health department's doing, but other times, they don't know all the good things that they do. And the other thing I want to point out, we came and we discussed seven programs and services. That's not all that Rhonda and her staff do. It's a minimum compliance check. So we're really there just asking about those programs, but I know they provide many more good things to their citizens. So with that, I guess the most important part is I have a certificate of designation to the Door County Public Health Department, and it was signed by the State Health Officer, Karen McEwen, and it says, "Door County is a local health department in good standing with statutes set forth by the Wisconsin Legislature and relevant administrative rules of the department." The important thing is, my team and I don't have to come out and review the Door County Health Department for five years. I guess that's the most part. That's the best part, because Rhonda loves going through it. It is a lot of work, but I think to make sure that we have quality in our public health system, it's important. And so I just wanted to say that we were very impressed by the Door County Health Department, and congratulations.
Thank you.
You wanna, I was gonna say, has anybody got any questions? If not, thank you.
I have one question. You say we have 87 health departments.
Across the state of Wisconsin, correct.
Okay, there's 72 counties.
Correct.
So where are the 15 others?
Some choose to have their own individual municipal. So in our area, the city of DePuy has a standalone health department, the city of Manasha has a standalone health department, and there's, down in the Milwaukee area, there's a lot of small communities, hail corners. So in some cases, they choose not to have their own going in with the county, and they have an individual municipal health department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to public comment now. For everybody that's here, we have a set of rules. I'm not gonna read them all because they're quite lengthy, but I'll remind everybody, you can talk about business of the board, except, the key word is "except," amendments to the Door County zoning ordinance. So you are not allowed to come forward and speak on the tower ordinance at all, period. You'll get approximately three minutes to speak. The board can respond to the comments, but they're not supposed to get into a debate. And we can elect to put them on the next agendas of the different committees that they might come under. And having said that, anybody wanna come forward to make a comment and introduce yourself and where you're from?
Hi, everybody. My name is Judy Donovan. I'm at 805 North Duluth Place. Most of you know that I was the Aging Services Manager until July of this year, and I guess right now, I consider myself a senior advocate. I just have to give a shout-out to the department that I worked under, Human Services. They were the hardest-working group of people and so dedicated. I miss them very, very much, and I, kudos to all they do every day and night. I have, I've had a lot of concerns lately, and it's basically the treatment of seniors. I had a senior call me yesterday and said that she had called Mr. Burley, and she had a concern, and she said he was very cordial, and he listened to her concern, and she appreciated that. Then she called Mr. Fisher, and Mr. Fisher started... a concern, and she said he was very cordial and he listened to her concern, and she appreciated that. Then he, she called Mr. Fisher, and Mr. Fisher started yelling at her and saying, "Who put you up to this? Who put you up to this?" She said, "Nobody put me up to this," but she was concerned about the senior center being by the Justice Center because of her inability to be able to drive that distance. Now, I know, in the Property Committee, Mr. Fisher said, "Those who say they can't drive to the West Side if a, if a new senior center was located on Duluth Avenue, as soon as they're done playing cards, they get in their cars and drive to Green Bay, to Sam's Clubs or to the casino or wherever." Do you know how many people that you angered? People that cannot move because of strokes or other mobility issues? This was very, very hurtful. Then she went on to say, "I just want to talk to you about, you know, my concerns." And she said, "Liars should not be on this earth." Now, I'm assuming that was meant towards me, since you called me a liar at the Property Committee, but then she said...
Mr. Chairman, no, I did not.
Um, I was there...
Excuse me, Kenny. You'll get a chance to respond, but we got to keep it. You've got only a few minutes left, a minute left or so.
Okay, so, anyway, she, he said, he said that, and then she said, "But the Pope said we're supposed to all get along." And that was kind of the end of the conversation. Then he went on to say that we have to answer to all the taxpayers and not just the 85 or 100 people who go there and want a social club. You enjoy your golf, don't you? I mean, and you should, everybody should...
Let's try not to make this personal.
Okay. Seniors that have no one, like this lady, Ruth, 82 and a half, she said the senior center is the sunshine of her life. She goes to the hospital first and she volunteers, then she comes to the senior center, she has a meal, and she, she plays cards or exercises. We have to learn to treat our seniors better. Speaking of the Pope, he said, he called the seniors of the throwaway culture. He said, "A country is worth the way it treats the most vulnerable, including our seniors." We're common. They call it the Silver Tsunami, and in a decade, we'll have more seniors than any other population in Door County. So I want everybody to consider that. And in one of the studies we did, there was a few things that seniors were concerned about, safety, one of them. The second one was being treated with respect. One of our seniors said, "The minute your hair turns gray, you become invisible." And I just want to remind everybody, the, we don't want to fight the Board, we want to help the seniors. Jerry has made a wonderful offer of property that we could build a new center on, and we could create something magnificent. He's already doing it. He's starting with a senior ocean and filling the gaps of senior needs. I just want to throw that out, that's an opportunity. We could have something great for the seniors of Door County.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else got public comment? Go ahead, Jerry. Or, yeah, go ahead.
Good morning, everybody. Since I was here for Jeff Raffens' presentation, I thought, well, I'll kill two birds with one stone. And I thought I would just...
Jerry, introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Jerry Warwick, President, Chief Executive Officer, Administration of Door County Medical Center. And I thought I would just take this opportunity just to clear up some stuff I've read with regards to the ambulance garage. The history of it is that back in the early 90s, we signed an agreement with the county to relocate their ambulance facilities to our property. I think it's a 40-year agreement, I think it's a cost of a dollar a year. I was rather naive in those days, but a dollar a year, and it still has like 15, about 15 more years ago, I think, give or take a few months. So, the first thing I want to clear up is that we are not forcing the county out of their current facility. You have a legally binding contract for another 15 years, and if you choose to stay, you certainly may, may do that. What, what has changed is that back in the early 90s, when we went into that agreement, the front door of the hospital was on 16th Place. Since then, the front door of the hospital has changed over to 18th Avenue, or 18th Street, and therefore, the ambulance garage is kind of in our front door. So if you all would like to move, I don't have any problems with that. Secondly, in, in, we, in the discussions, in just the formal, informal discussions with the county, we do have like eight acres along the highway, on Highway 4257. And we suggested to the county that, to all of you, that that's available if you would like to use that, since it's right there at the intersection of Michigan and the, and the highway. A nice location. So we throw that out there as an, as an option. One of the concerns is, would we be willing to sell that property? And in all due respect, it would be really not good on my part, or nor does our Board want to sell that property, because we really don't know what's going to happen in the next 50 years, how healthcare is going. We know that with the new building where we are now, we certainly aren't going to be moving off of that structure in the next 50 years. But 50 years from now, when I'm pushing daisies, healthcare will change, and there'll be a need then to probably begin looking at another structure and build a new structure based upon what the needs of the community are and how healthcare is going to be practiced a half a century from now. So therefore, some of the discussion, I think, that I've been reading the papers about the county's willingness to buy the land, and we're not willing to sell the land for those reasons. But we are willing to lease it to the county for a period of 50 years, a half, a half a century. And, and I'm certain you probably won't even use it for a half a century, because the current place, which was leased for 40 years, we've had 15 years to go, and you're already looking at how to adapt to the changes and needs of the community with 15 years to go. So I just, the two points I just wanted to set straight is that, is, number one, we're not asking or evicting you all from your property, we don't have any legal ability to do that. And secondly, the position of, of the Door County Medical Center's Board of Directors is, is not to sell the land, but we would be willing to lease the land for you, to you, for the next half-century.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
That's it, right? Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else? Sure, you want to come forward?
My name is Dave Studi Baker. I live in Liberty Grove. I'm Chairperson of the Liberty Grove Technical Committee, member of the Liberty Grove Economic Development Committee, and a member of the Technology Council of the Door County Economic Development Corporation. Since I'm not allowed to speak on the Tower Resolution, I will not. But I do urge you to vote no today on the increase in, in permit fees that has been proposed by the Planning Department. Increasing those fees will make it more costly for rural Door County to have enhanced internet services. And I think that is a critical issue, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come forward.
I'm Lisa Beer, 5963 Joans Road, Surjen Bay. These aren't my prepared comments, but I'm going to try to organize my thoughts. I guess my question and concern is, in a meeting of a public entity representing the public, that the county board can restrict comment on topics that the public might want to talk about? Not being a regular attendee of your meetings, I don't know if that's commonplace?
Well, what we have is, there was a public hearing, and I think you referred to the Tower. There was a public hearing on the Tower, where the pros and cons, and we have a rule that says you cannot talk before the county board after the public have a chance at the RPC, because, and I think the main reason is that you could come and talk for it or against it, and the opposition doesn't know you're going to be here, it doesn't have a chance to come and rebut what you have. So, at the public hearing that was held on RPC, that's when that pro and con can be presented. So, we've excluded zoning ordinances from the public comment area.
And I understand that, I understand that process, and without talking about what you don't want us to talk about, I guess what I'd say is, there seems to be a lot, there seem to be a lot of groups that don't feel like they were adequately informed of that public hearing. And shame on us for not being more knowledgeable about what's going on in public, in public government. But, since it seems that there are so many people that may want to talk on that particular subject, I may ask the county board to perhaps send that back to the RPC for additional public input.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't want to go down that road right now. Anybody else? Come forward, go ahead.
I'm Gail Ritchie. I live on Maple Grove Road in Fish Creek. And the one thing that I have had a concern about since, we won't talk about the Tower issues or the little antenna things, but when they were having another issue about the larger towers, it came up at one of the meetings...
We're not supposed to be talking about the...
Well, I know we're not, because I'm talking about a map. I'm talking about a map. But it came up in a meeting when there were people that were putting together criteria about that larger tower that was supposed to be going up.
Yeah, we're not supposed to talk about the tower.
But they came up with a map discrepancy, and the county board had the wrong map of the area that was not in proportion, and that map had been circulating. So what I'm here to do, request, is that we be sure that all boards have the proper map, the correct map.
That we're going to be discussing...
Because there were mileage issues, and I'm discussing about the airport issue and the surveillance, the circumference around the airport and the height issues that come around the...
We're going to be discussing all that at the county board level, so...
Okay, but can, can you do that for us, to make sure that we do have the proper maps?
That's going to be discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else? If not, go ahead.
My name's Kevin Ordall. I'm a constituent of Bailey's Harbor, 8523 Schultz Lane, lifelong resident of Door County, and a local business owner here. And I'd like to reciprocate comments made by the gentleman here from Liberty Grove, that an increase in the taxes here will make it less affordable for people moving into Door County. And from the standpoint of having internet service, it is an absolute vital part of what I do, selling second homes. We can lose a lot of tax base, a lot of funding here, if people stop coming here to enjoy our standard of living, which can deteriorate if taxes are raised under some of the provisions in front of you this morning. So I'd encourage you to deny that, kick it back, or dissolve it altogether. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? If not, we'll go to Supervisor's Response, and Kenny, keep it cool.
Yeah, well, I just, when you were there, you know it wasn't me that...
I just, yeah.
Said liar.
Keep it, yeah.
Okay.
Keep it cool, yeah.
You, you know that. And I, I don't like people coming here and misrepresenting the facts. I did get a call. I asked the lady what her name was, but she wouldn't, wouldn't tell me. I asked, well, who prompted the call? She wouldn't tell me, and she went on to talk about the senior center. Every time I tried to explain something, she would interrupt me. And that's, but I was not howling at her. But Judy knows I'm not the one that said what, that her comments were lies. That was somebody else at that meeting. The other thing, as far as my comment on the driving, yes, the ones that can drive, And somebody who can't, Judy says they've got strokes and this, and they can't, but does she think somebody that's that bad off is out driving a car? She knows better than to make that comment. Those people are not driving, they've got, we've got a shuttle service for them, as I understand it. And no matter where that senior center would be located, if we fix it up right there, or we move it one way or another, there's always going to be a shuttle for the people that need it, and we will take care of the people from Door County. And that is what I tried to impress on this lady. She was just wound up, one tear.
Okay. Thank you, Kenny. Anybody else got any response to the bids?
Yeah, my only comment is that it's very, very unfortunate that someone is giving misinformation to these, to these people at the senior center. You know, I got some phone calls at home saying that I am against building a senior center. You know, totally false information. I feel, I feel bad. So one lady was 83, another lady called me, she's 87. These poor people being told misinformation, and I don't know if they're told to call supervisors, but I, I wish that they would not be giving out false information, and, you know, to these poor old people. You know, they, they think that that's the truth, and so then they make their phone call. And I, I listen to these, to these people that call me, and thank them for calling me, told them that we are looking at options, and that I am not against building a senior center, never have been against building a senior center, but we are looking at other options of where to build a senior center. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else got comment? If not, we'll go to Administrator's Monthly Report.
Nothing really significant to report, just a reminder for everyone about our tour at 1:00, that if you're able to make it, just a reminder for that, at the Highway Shop, so, other than that, no, at the Old Highway Shop, sorry.
Anybody got any questions, or? Minutes of the meeting, August 25th, someone would like to make a motion approval. Motion by Kathy, seconded by Roy. Is there any corrections or additions or subtractions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. Resolutions. Approval of donation, Door County Realtors, Door County Sheriff's Department, their programs. After I get this first one done. You're right, though. I'm gonna, you got it written on that way? Let's leave that one go right now. Mariah wanted me to switch around some of the resolutions. So our first one's going to be, and that's what I told Jill, that the first one will be the report, amendments to Door County zoning ordinance, create Chapter 14 communications support structures and related facility. Motion to accept the report.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by David Engel. So do we want to have the discussion under the report, correct? This is the big, big one of the day, isn't it?
Yeah, and you didn't have to do our stuff first, I mean, there's some other people here, it's like Greg, the Silent Water thing. I just meant, when you get to the Tower stuff, it makes more sense to reverse the order of those.
Right. But I told Kath, Jill, rather, that we're going to do your report first. Sorry. She's got it all on the computer that way. That's why we backed it a little bit.
Okay.
And you're going to explain it all to us.
I'm going to explain everything. Good morning. I'm Mariah Good, Director of the County Planning and Zoning Department. I also have in the back of the room Becky Kerwin, the Planner for the Department, who can act as backup with more detailed questions that you might have, and then obviously Grant Thomas, Corporation Counsel, as well, because he knows the statutes better than I do. I handed out on all of your desks this morning, kind of a bulleted list that summarizes what I'm going to talk about, because I'm mostly going to talk about process and history as far as regulations that we've had, and then point out the major differences between the ordinance proposed before you and what we had before. And then, like I said, if you've got more detailed questions about statutes or that kind of thing, Grant or Becky will be able to answer those. So, the item that you are considering, should I wait? Did you get a motion, or do you want me to just go ahead?
No, we have a motion under the report.
Okay. So, Door County, I didn't look back into the 1968 ordinance, but Door County has had regulations of towers for at least 20 years, since the 1995 zoning ordinance was adopted. And there were certain districts that could go in, certain permit processes that they had to be authorized by, depending on how large they were and what type they were. Then in 2004, the county, for the first time, adopted a standalone telecommunication tower ordinance, and that ordinance, among other exemptions, exempted any tower that was less than 75 feet in height. In the spring of 2013, a wireless internet, internet service provider asked the Resource Planning Committee if it would consider adding another exemption whereby towers such as those that they put up would be exempt up to 125 feet in height. And the Resource Planning Committee and the County Board did make that change to the telecommunication ordinance. Shortly after... Shortly after that, in late spring and early summer of 2013, Grant Thomas and I met a couple of times with the CATS committee, what is it, Communication, I can't think of the advisory, or I mean the acronym.
Technological.
Yes, that one. We met with them a couple of times and with the Resource Planning Committee about making further adjustments to the ordinance, because it was the opinion of Grant and of a couple of people on the CATS committee, that maybe that exemption that had just been put in place wasn't the best thought out, and that the ordinance needed some further work. So in the midst of that handful of meetings in the summer of 2013, the state budget bill got adopted, the 2013-2015 biennial budget at the state level. And in that state budget, they created new statutes that governed how municipalities, whether it's a county, a city, a village, or a town, can regulate communication towers. And so at that moment, when that budget got signed into effect, Door County's existing standalone telecommunications tower ordinance became obsolete, so we didn't have anything that we could enforce anymore. In October of 2013, the RPC discussed those new state regulations as an agenda item, and the fact that Door County was going to need a new ordinance. At that point, we thought we were ambitious, we thought we could get it done within the next couple of months, and that we would get it drafted and adopted by the summer of 2014. That didn't happen. We were working on the comprehensive plan and a number of other projects, and we just didn't get to it. We gave verbal updates to the RPC along the way about the fact that we hadn't even actually started drafting anything until last summer, 2014, and that was in the July 2014 minutes where it was an actual agenda item. In October of 2014, the RPC, and I believe Grant was there, also discussed at length the regulatory options that were out there for the county as far as regulating towers. And there was a local interested company that was present and part of that discussion, and the Resource Planning Committee voted unanimously to have the county staff proceed with drafting an ordinance. So then, over a number of meetings in January, February, March, and so on, this year, the Resource Planning Committee discussed potential regulations and looked at potential drafts of the ordinance, and interested parties were notified of and present at all of those meetings and invited to speak at all but the last one. That last one was May 21st, and that's when the Resource Planning Committee sponsored for public hearing a chapter, a new chapter of the zoning ordinance, chapter 14. Via our normal process, when things go to public hearing, we sent packets to all 14 towns, offering them a time period within which to comment on those regulations. We also sent them a couple, many of them already knew that these discussions were taking place, and we already, we sent copies of the statutes and other things with those packets as well. Several of those towns invited planning staff to come and discuss the regulations with them, which we did at various meetings. And then in August, the Resource Planning Committee held their hearing on this matter. So all the towns, separate from the packet, that got mailed to all of them, all the towns, all the county board members, everybody else that's required to be notified by statute, and anybody else that had told us they were interested, got notification of that hearing at the Resource Planning Committee. And that would have, those notices would have gone out probably in mid-July, I think. So after the hearing, the Resource Planning Committee wanted some time to digest the information that had been brought to them. They also had noted a couple of things that they thought they knew that they might want to change, and so the next two meetings they held on September 3rd and 17th of this year, they held lengthy discussions concerning the information that had been gathered at the hearing and asking us to make certain changes to the ordinance. And then on the 17th, that was when they voted to forward to you to recommend a modified version of the chapter that had been proposed. So that's what's in front of you today, is a modified version of that chapter. Now, as far as the actual ordinance, the statutes that are at play here, there's a number of them. There's county comprehensive zoning, there's county shoreline zoning, there's those new statutes that were created as part of the 2013 to 2015 budget bill, where they created new provisions for mobile services and radio broadcasting, and we also have the 1996 Federal Telecommunications Act and amendments that have come to that. For example, two of the things that we have in the proposed chapter in front of you that we've heard that there are objections to are the fact that we're precluding people from putting towers in wetlands, and that they're being precluded from putting towers within the 75-foot setback from the ordinary high watermark. Yes, those are not in the tower regulations that were developed as part of the budget, but those are in the state shoreline regulations. So again, there's, there's more than one set of statutes at play here that we believe authorize the regulations the way that we've proposed them. So the main differences between the old and the proposed regulations, and this is important because I think one thing people aren't understanding is that these regulations are actually less restrictive than what we had in place from, well, actually ever, up until 2013. I mean, in the last years, we haven't had anything, but these new regulations are less restrictive than what we used to have. The former ordinance that we had, the standalone and the zoning ordinance restricted where towers could go, we dictated what zoning districts they were allowed in. This one does not. We're not allowed to, and it, it doesn't do that. The former ordinance also had, as I mentioned previously, a height exemption for certain kinds of towers. It's been the opinion of the county's engineering consultants, and then, again, the county Corporation Counsel, that we cannot do that anymore. We cannot exempt certain kinds of towers nor certain types of providers. A third difference, big difference, between the old regulations and the proposals in front of you is that the former ordinance, when towers got to a certain height, a public hearing was required, they needed a conditional use permit. No public hearing anymore. It's just an over-the-counter application with the county. One other thing, and I forgot to put this on your list, which is a difference, and this language is in the proposal that's in front of you because it's in the statutes, unlike most types of regulations, normally if a county adopts an ordinance and then a town decides it wants to adopt an ordinance about the same topic, an applicant would normally have to comply with both sets of regulations. In this case, when they wrote the budget bill in 2013, it says that if a county adopts a telecommunications tower ordinance under these new statutes, and then a town decides that it wants to adopt an ordinance, in that town, the only regulations that are going to be in play are the town's, not the county's. And that's, that's a difference. And then finally, things that are the same or very similar to the old regulations that were always in place, at least for the past two decades, setbacks, application requirements, proof of insurance, and then the ability to finance the removal of the tower. As far as the format of the new ordinance, it's basically set up in three sections. I'm sure you've all looked at it, given the interest in this topic. The first section is 1401, deals with mobile services. 1402, it deals with radio broadcast, and then 1403 deals with other, which is any other type of communication tower besides those two. 1402 and 1403 then refer back to that first section, that mobile services citing section for most of the requirements and definitions. So the modifications that the Resource Planning Committee requested after the public hearing, and these are in red in your packets, so if you're looking at your Zoom, in the ordinance draft, wherever you see something in red that's new language that the Resource Planning Committee wanted added, or if it's got strike through, it's language that was there that they wanted to have struck after the public hearing. So we made numerous cleanup amendments, punctuation, grammar, if we had an incorrect reference in the, in the chapter to another section, those were all cleaned up. We eliminated the requirement for an engineering study that would show the ability that your tower, if you're putting up a new tower, could be co-located upon. That was one of the major concerns that we had heard from a local provider, that their towers were not designed to have other providers locate on those towers. So we eliminated that requirement for that study and the requirement that you allow people to co-locate upon you. But note, there is still language in the chapter, because it's in the state statute, that requires that if you are putting up a new tower, you have to show that you couldn't co-easily locate your antenna on somebody else's tower. So when you're going to put up a new one, you have to show that you can't go over on the tower over there for some reason. And then finally, we reorganized, or at least relabeled, the application section to make it more clear what information was required for what level of application. The new statutes have what they call Class 1 and Class 2 co-locations. Class 2 is where somebody's just doing something relatively minor to a tower, like maybe adding a new antenna. Class 1, they might actually be extending the height of the tower, and then a new application is obviously for a new tower. So that's the background as far as process and what's been in place and the major differences between the regulations. I don't know of, Grant, if you have anything that you want to add, or?
No, I think you've succinctly explained the process and how we got to where we are today, and people have questions, I'll try to answer those, but.
Anybody got any, David?
Mariah, would you clarify for me something you said? Can a town institute their own ordinance and it override the county?
Yes.
So if we pass this today, any town could still go ahead and implement their own tower ordinance, and that would apply in their township, and the county one would not.
Correct. That's in the statutes, and that language is in the chapter as well. Yeah.
May I add to that comment and the question? Under that pretense, if a town or village does that, and let's say they draft theirs where it becomes less restrictive, if that's even an opportunity than what the county has, then does it still fall under those rules?
Nope. The town would be the only one that governs. And I should say, this doesn't apply in the villages or the city. This only applies in the towns. But yeah, it doesn't, that's why it's something a little bit different that they did in the statutes, where normally, yeah, if one was more restricted, you'd have to comply with that one. This time, does not have to be. So if a town adopted something that was much less restrictive, only the town ordinance would be in effect in that town.
Or if it was less restrictive, it would still be in effect.
Right. But, yeah. Yep, no matter what, if the town adopts one, only the town is going to be in effect in that town.
Can the town adopt a less restrictive one than the state?
Um, less restrictive than the state? I'm not sure, because it-
The town, the town nor the county are under any obligation to regulate mobile tower or accessory structures, and if they choose to regulate it, the only thing the statute does is define what, that you can't be more restrictive. So again, this was put into the budget bill, it's not the most archly drafted statute, but, and there's not any published case law on it, but one may imagine that under this scenario, a town could enact an ordinance that is less strict than the mobile tower citing statutes, and that would pass legal muster.
The other thing, and Grant can pipe in on this if I misspeak, but if we don't have anything in place, and again, the statutes, the way this budget bill was written, you have to adopt these regulations under your zoning authority, which is a little odd. And I, I don't know, if we don't have a chapter in place at all, then I don't know whether we're supposed to be calling these towers structures, and they get regulated under the typical zoning standards, which might be even more restrictive than this chapter.
The answer is no. If we do not enact a statute under 66.0404 or 66.0406, the mobile towers and accessory structures would be unregulated.
They're not. Okay.
That's actually a good segue. I think what, if you will allow me, there were two groups that showed up, I think it's safe to say, in force at the public hearing before the Resource Planning Committee, opposed to these regulations. The first group, and I think this is a very fair characterization, but there were five other members of the RPC and staff there, so they can pipe up that they think I'm wrong, but the first group was opposed to any regulation of mobile towers and accessory structures, and made what I would argue were, you know, sort of arguments by hyperbole and not really backing up the conclusory statements that were made by facts. And that was, I think, a relatively small group of folks. The other group tended to be the, what I'll characterize as the industry. That group, I think primarily AT&amp;T and EnSite and Cellcom have an honest disagreement with my interpretation of the statutes. I think it's fair to characterize that AT&amp;T and EnSite and Cellcom made thoughtful and articulate legal arguments about what the statute permits and what it does not permit, that their attorneys and myself have an honest difference of opinion and have agreed to disagree on what the statute permits and does not permit. And we, by we, I mean myself and the Resource Planning Committee, and the planning department staff are well aware that the statute in its present form might face a legal challenge. That's perfectly fine. Attorneys agree to disagree all the time. And what we've done in crafting the ordinance is included the statutory authority that was enacted in the budget bill that Mariah referred to, but also used what I'll characterize as our non-zoning police powers, with a focus on public health, safety, and general welfare objectives, and believe that those regulations that are in the statute that fall under those headings are really the minimum practicable to achieve the objectives we set out. Mariah talked about two of them, not wanting communication or mobile towers in wetlands, not wanting mobile towers within the shoreline setback, and the other regulation that got some specific attention involved not placing mobile towers in what we've characterized as our public safety communications corridors. So, and again, it's an honest difference of an opinion among attorneys, and if it gets challenged, the courts will decide who had the correct interpretation and who did not. But at present, while there are some circuit court decisions out there that are not binding precedent, there simply are not any published Wisconsin Court of Appeals cases that any side can point to to say their interpretation is correct.
I should also say, we didn't write this in a vacuum. We, Becky pulled out ordinances from a number of counties that have adopted ordinances to take a look at what other counties were doing, so that we weren't starting from scratch and not doing things that we didn't think were correct. There's a lot of hands up. Do you want me to call it?
Well, I just wanted to ask Grant to elaborate a little bit on, on an example, maybe your wetland one was of, of an agreement to disagree between you and some of the companies or the county that represent the company. You know, what, what's an example of something that was agree to disagree upon, as far as opinion?
Those items.
Those are examples.
Those are examples.
Those are examples, though, you know, and they all fall under the general heading of public health, safety, and general welfare, and we believe we have the ability to do that under, again, our non-zoning police powers. So, it's sort of an, it's a technical legal argument, but that's sort of why you have me here, and that's why you pay me. The ordinance itself largely reflects the statutory authority that was enacted in accordance with the 2013 budget bill, but we've always been, I think, upfront about the fact that there are elements in there that we think can be in there above and beyond what is in the statutory language under 66.0404 and 66.0406, but we think they can be justified by pointing to our, again, non-zoning police powers.
Can I ask you one more follow-up to that? This is a specific example, then. Knowing you referenced shoreline zoning and setback, stuff like that, you know, within the shorelines or wetlands, about what could or couldn't happen. A specific example would be, could a town, anywhere in the county or by us on the island, if we wanted to, whether it's a municipality or private or whoever, there's a lot of dead areas on services, you know, because of our cliffs and shoreline and some of that. Knowing that there's setbacks on shoreline zoning restrictions, is there a way to exempt, or could a tower still be put in an area that could provide service to a location now that doesn't have it? Could that happen?
If you look, if you look at the setback section in the ordinance, I'll try and find the page. If, if the provider can show that there's nowhere else for the tower to go, then it can go in a wetland, or it can go in the shoreline setback area.
It could.
And if a tower provider can show that their tower will collapse in a radius that's smaller than the height, well, 1.1 times the height of their tower's required setback, then we use that smaller radius of setback.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Chuck.
I guess, I, I tried reading through some of the information that was provided here, and I got lost in it, but just from the information that's been provided to us, I guess Kathy Schultz and myself are on the Door County Economic Development Corporation, and they go in opposition to us passing this legislation for the simple fact that they think it's going to deter movement forward with businesses and so on coming into the county, and limiting their ability to be able to get the communications that they need. I'm not an electronics expert, I'm not sure what exactly that entails. With the part of, an individual from up north stating he's a doctor, under correspondence, he stated that he's in dire need of high-speed internet just to keep in contact with his operation, being a doctor and so on and so on and forward, and I think he's up in the Liberty Grove area somewheres. And I guess the, the process that we have here, and you said we, we followed other counties, but we're not like other counties, and you know that very well. We're very unique in the length of our county and providing service to the north and to the south, because there's nothing alongside of us that we can share from, to use mutual towers, and it's important to be able to allow these businesses to grow in our county, especially bring in some very good paying jobs. And a lot of those people can work from homes, and it's, it's important that way. that way. So I guess, it's, do you see anything that we've got in this ordinance that we're restricting businesses from moving forward and getting the internet service that they provide today? Because I think it's, it's essential. It's in every house today. If you're a family with children and you don't have internet service, they're going to be way behind when it comes time to go to school.
The main arguments that we heard, and as Grant explained, there were basically two camps of people that showed up at the hearing, but all of the arguments came down to cost, essentially. And so it wasn't that they're not going to be able to put up towers anymore, or that they're not going to be able to provide internet, it was that it would be more expensive to do so. So some of the modifications that the Resource Planning Committee asked us for relate to exactly that. So we made the modifications to requiring that you show that your tower can be co-located upon, gone. That's not in the proposal anymore. The fee discussion, which we'll get to later, the Resource Planning Committee is voting or is recommending, I guess, a fee that's a third of what was the original potential discussed fee at the RPC level. The insurance, there was some concern about the cost of the insurance or the vagueness of the wording with the insurance. Grant redrafted that after the hearing, and the Resource Planning Committee looked at that. I can't think, the other, some of the other things that people thought were going to be time-consuming or expensive, like getting assurances from the Information Systems Department that you're not putting your tower up in a critical communications corridor, or from the FAA that you're not going to be in violation of any of their regulations. All of those things we've looked into, those are all free and take very minimal time. So I think we actually asked for input from a couple of the companies with, and we gave them a specific list of items and said, please tell us how much you think this will cost you in dollars for each tower or each project. And we got relatively vague or minimal responses back, I would say. And then at the hearing, I would say the main thing that people talked about as far as cost was the fee. I've got three RPC members that have, I'll go with the chair, Ken.
Go ahead, Susan. You can call, why don't you call him?
Well, maybe Sue was going to bring that up, but we made the point many times, and first I'll say, we are regulating, this is a proposal to regulate, not to impede. Please don't get confused with that. We brought that up, I won't speak for anybody else, but I think Sue would bag me up on this. I brought up many, I think she would, I'm not sure.
That might be the third time ever.
Well, I brought up many times that I can't get high-speed internet. I live within the city of Sturgeon Bay, and I cannot get high-speed internet. My neighbor cannot get high-speed internet. I've talked to AT&amp;T and I brought that up, excuse me, at the hearings. I can't get that from you. And I want to make sure, and I ask this, as we go through this process, I ask Mariah, we are not keeping anybody from supplying this to us.
Correct.
And we are not, we are not. And I would like to get high-speed internet, and there are some small operators out there that might be able to take care of it, haven't found one yet. But, and when I brought it up to AT&amp;T, they didn't deny it. They didn't deny that, yes, there are areas. So they're just not doing it. It's not that we're trying to impin, or keep them from doing it. They're not supplying it to us because they can't make enough money to give it to us. They can't charge me enough for service to get it for me. And that's what we're up against here in Door County, okay? This ordinance is not preventing that. But thank you for letting me point that out.
Susan.
Yeah, I, as one of the five people that are most likely to be tarred and feathered by the rest of the county board, I would like to make a couple comments as well. Ken is right that the last thing that the RPC wanted, wants to do is impede internet. I too wish I had a signal that worked. We have spent an awful lot of time talking about each of the provisions to try to make it as least restrictive on business as possible, keeping in mind that we restrict business all the time for various things. I mean, that's not a unique thing. And what I struggle with is the balancing of our responsibility for the health and safety. And, I mean, you heard a couple of examples. We could vote this down. We could simply say, we're not going to regulate this. And what will that mean? That will mean a tower can go anywhere. Okay? Because there won't be somebody checking on it to see what happens. And you heard, possibly in a wetland, possibly close to the shore, two inches from the neighbor's lot line. If the unthinkable happens and the tower falls, there would be no language requiring liability coverage to protect, you know, paying for the damages. Hopefully, nothing like that ever happens, and maybe nothing ever does. But one thing that will happen is that when the next generation of towers comes out, and the towers that are being constructed today become obsolete, there would be no requirement saying that the operator needs to take the tower down and clean up the site. And there are other examples. So I feel like it's our job to figure out how to balance this public safety with trying to come up with a minimal ordinance that hopefully will allow businesses to go forward and help all of us. And by the way, this is not a unique thing to Door County. I just the other day read an article about Pierce County. This rural broadband connectivity is an issue all over the state. So, you know, that's, that's a concern. We debated it with regard to the fees, and we asked the staff to go back and find out what it would cost to cover their time, to cover what it costs to administer the ordinance. And that's what they did. Now, if this board were so inclined, we could say, you know, that's been our practice in the past with regard to other parts of the ordinance. But if we want to cover it with the levy, which obviously we have levy caps, then that is another issue. You know, direction there could come from this board. But I guess I want you to know that we really did chew on this a while. And it just, you know, it seemed like this was at least the balance we had coming forward to the board. And in fact, every month, if not every other month, we've got an amendment, a text or a map amendment that comes before this board. So it's not like whatever gets passed here today, if it gets passed at all, is carved in stone. Sections could be amended. So anyway, please don't think we are taking this lightly and are trying to harm getting internet in this county. We get it. We just have to figure out how to do this.
David, David, and Don, you got anything to add? David, go ahead.
On the information that we received in RPC, but also as supervisors, everything that we received in the mail or via the internet, email, et cetera, a lot of it has to do with cost, that we're adding so much cost to it. And I guess we've asked companies to provide us some of that information, so we were aware of it. And as Mariah said, we got kind of fuzzy information of what that was. But I guess I would ask Mariah and Grant, based on what we've done with this recommended ordinance or change to the statute, what cost have we added to, within the proposed?
Well, you haven't added anything to anybody that would have been regulated under the old ordinance, because we always had an application, well, okay, the application fee. So whatever the fee is that you pick, there is a fee. Maybe it'll be higher than the old one, maybe not. So that might be an added cost. But there's always been a requirement that if you were being regulated, that you provide proof of insurance and that you provide proof of the ability to take down the tower when it's obsolete. So for anybody that wasn't regulated, I guess those would be the, the costs that are added. But there's no cost for the verification of not being in a critical public communications corridor. There's no cost to deal with the FAA and, I think that's it.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, aside from the permit fee that Mariah mentioned, these regulations from top to bottom are less restrictive than we've ever had, so.
David, do you want to make a comment? You're the last one of the, that's by-
Well, Don's left. One comment. I would say that this is one ordinance that has been rehashed so many times. We have accepted audience participation on a routine basis at our meetings up until the end of the final public hearing. Many of the audience members, when we asked questions, posed questions, like Grant stated, were relatively reluctant to actually provide us useful information to help us make those decisions. I personally carry the insurance policy that they're asking for, for my business. It's not that big of a deal. It's not that expensive to me. I lost money last year, but that's my issue. My question for you would be, it's been roughly two years since this ordinance has been defunct as it is, correct?
Right.
How many towers have gone up in those two years where there was zero regulations? Which means nobody could do anything, correct?
I don't know, but I know there have been towers that have gone up, because we get phone calls asking if we've got regulations and whether there's anything that they need to do. So I know some temporary towers have gone up. I'm not sure about any permanent on the part of AT&amp;T, but I know DC Broadband's put up some. I don't, I don't have a number.
I think the only significant-
The county tower.
-tower that's gone up over this time period has been the tower on the county property in the Brussels Hill that was built by-
And that's the only communications tower that I'm aware of also.
And they voluntarily complied with the audience, with the, with the ordinance, so.
So here you had two years in which some of the audience members that were complaining could have done anything they wanted to, even just simply started the project. And that would have grandfathered in the project. Cleaning a site would have grandfathered in.
That's actually still true, so if-
Exactly, it still is. Until this ordinance gets passed, it's still valid.
Joe, you got?
I'm just trying to, yeah, one last comment, I guess, is, then I'm trying to understand why there is heartburn and resilience or skepticism from the public on this matter. If in fact, what everybody's saying is true, that this is a less restrictive deal, then why am I getting calls from everybody in Liberty Grove? Why are we getting letters from everybody? What, what don't they know or haven't learned or understood or anything that we know, you know? I just-
There's, there's one company that previously chose to avail themselves of the height exemptions in the old ordinance that will now be regulated. I think that's the, that's the difference.
What is the cost to regulate that, Mariah, for that, for their smaller tower?
Well, again, it's whatever, whatever fee you end up deciding on, and then the proof of insurance, and then the proof of the ability to take the tower down when it's obsolete.
And remind them why they have to be regulated.
Why they have to be?
Why those particular towers are now going to have to be regulated.
Well, we're not, we don't have-
Be treated within the same ordinance.
Yeah, and I kind of went through this on the, the list of topics earlier, but it's the opinion of, well, myself reading the statutes, Grant reading the statutes, the engineering consultant that the county Information Systems Department uses in Minnesota, that we cannot distinguish between provider types. So you can't say this kind of tower is regulated and this kind of tower is not. And you can't do height exemptions likewise. You can't do height exemptions anymore unless you exempt every type of tower of a certain height, more or less. Is that what you meant?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I also received numerous phone calls between the Town of Gardiner and Nassau Wapbee, representing both districts. And their main concerns are, I guess, not knowing and fearful of the regulations not allowing small businesses to be able to set up shop and take care of the internet options that are available in the foreseeable future. Their concerns are some of the regulations don't permit them to put towers or subunits, I guess. I'm not electronically inclined in the road right-ofways or on telephone poles and things like that. I'm not sure where they came from on that or what they were trying to relate to. But I guess the fear out there is that it's so restrictive that we won't be able to see high-speed internet in, in the rural areas. And I, I know for the Town of Gardiner, there are no towers at all, and it's very difficult to get mediocre internet service sometimes.
Well, what, I mean, what goes in a road right-ofway is up to whether it's a town or the county or the state, and no one's going to let you put a tower in a road right-ofway.
I'm not so sure it was a tower as much as it might have been like an antenna attached to a pole, so they can get around obstacles to reach the tower.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that qualifies as a tower. I mean, there are a lot of exemptions in here. I mean, anything that's private, if you're putting up a, I'll call it a tower, if you're putting up a structure in your yard or at your business to get internet access for you, and it's not something that's going, you know, to the whole neighborhood, it's not a, a full-fledged tower, that, those are exempt. And I know that there have been discussions of proposals in Southern Door, I think it was in Nassau Wapbee, to do towers and then have what they were calling repeater poles that would then send the signal along.
That's probably what they-
Yeah, and, but no one's ever come to us to tell us exactly what the project is or where they want to put those. So I don't, I'm not intimately familiar with what the details are. I know we've talked at the staff level, if the regulations go through and they come and talk to us and tell us what they want to do, that the tower would be regulated. But if they're doing kind of the repeater poles as a series of antennas, I don't even know if repeater poles is the right term, that would probably be one application, not, you know, an application for every single pole. And I don't know that a utility company, because I think, again, it was my understanding, without having direct knowledge, that those were going to be new poles, not that, you know, WPS or Harper was going to let them put antennas on poles. And I would imagine that there probably are already restrictions from WPS or towns or county about putting new poles up in those road right-ofway. So I would think those are going to have to be setback from the right-ofway anyway, regardless of this ordinance.
Go ahead, Steve.
Ken kind of started it by saying AT&amp;T's not willing to spend their money because they can't make money putting a big tower up to a handful of people. So I think most of the calls people are getting, it's, it's from the people related to a small broadband provider. I think that's probably the, the majority of people's concerns. And I wondered if you guys had the discussion, I, this, the small broadband provider, in some cases, what they do is the landowner buys and, and pays to have the tower installed. They get free internet service out of it, but the provider's able to relay their signal to more of the neighborhood. And I wonder if you had that discussion, and if there's any way that the landowner can be, you know, not be put under all these restrictions because it's primarily for, for them to get internet, but yet it's helping the neighborhood get internet.
I'm waiting as far as the legality, but that, something like that where it's a tower that's going on your property, but it's serving the neighborhood, that would be regulated. I don't, I don't know that we'd have the ability to say, based on whose property it's on, that it's going to be regulated differently if it looks like a tower down the street, that-
But, but even though the property owner owns it and paid to put it up, there, and the benefit is they get their internet, they get internet service. The primary reason is so they can get internet. The secondary, you know, greatness of it is that it, you know, brings internet to the neighborhood.
I think that would be regulated. If it's just serving your property, it wouldn't be.
See, that, that's, I think, where the content, I think that's where most of the content is.
I mean, I don't remember if we talked about that at the Resource Planning Committee. I know that one particular local company does do that sometimes. I don't think it's very often that that's what they choose to do or what the private property owner chooses to do. But, but yeah, those would be regulated, because I don't, I don't think we'd have the ability to say, you know, if, I don't know, Project X, which looks exactly like Project Y, and is serving the same number of people, that one of them is going to get regulated differently than the other.
I guess I'd just throw that out there, that if there was a, a way to somehow, you know, make this process work, that that would be an option and be less regulated. I think that might help people be satisfied with an ordinance.
Don.
Yes, I just want to say that the first draft we came upon at the meeting for a new communication tower, the cost was originally $3,000. And the other fees were higher as well. And we decided to ask the, the planning committee, the planning department, what actually is the cost to generate the paperwork and to get a new communications tower, the permit to do this? And that's why it was reduced from $3,000 to $1,000. So we did not want the taxpayers of Door County to have to foot the bill for a new permit for a new communications tower. We felt that the communications tower person who wanted to put it up, they should have to pay for it themselves. And that's where that fee came from.
Joe, you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to elaborate on that comment there. But when you refer to the statement of the example that we just said of, you know, putting up a tower between the business and a landowner on their property that goes for themselves, I as an applicant could have petitioned to put a tower on my own property for whatever reason to get service. The second I start using that to bounce down, it now becomes a regulated facility. But I- But isn't the whole point of this whole thing that the regulations are less restrictive than they were in the past? Or what is the?
Right, that's no, how I answered Steve's question is no different than it was previously.
Right, that's my point. You're using, we're using the term regulated here, but in reality, it's less restrictive than what it's been.
It's less restrictive because you can put one up in a residential area now, which previously you couldn't. Previously, the old regulations, you had to be in larger lot districts or in, like, the agricultural districts or in commercial districts. Now you can go down in the smallest residential lot, as long as, you know, you can, and those are for the regulated ones, not the private ones, those can go anywhere.
But that's my point that I want to be known here, is that we are using that term here, and in fact, if what you're saying is accurate, it's less regulated now. So, not that somebody couldn't do it before, it's even easier to do now. So I don't understand why that's creating heartburn, which makes me think people are not understanding it.
I think it's because the one local company in question has availed themselves of the exemptions that were there before. So they always made sure that their towers were low enough that they weren't regulated. They would have been regulated and gone through the exact same process as everybody else if they had been taller.
Right.
And now they will be regulated, so it's, the process is really, you know, not that different.
Paul.
I just wanted to make a comment about a little bit of what you were talking about, Don, is that we're dealing with a county that is not very populated all over the place. We have some densely populated areas and not so densely populated areas, but we all agree that it's really important that internet service is available and accessible to anyone, anywhere in this county, and that that would draw in new consumers, build the tax base. It seems to me, then, that because if we're living in a densely populated area, it's more likely that we're going to get good internet service. If we are in a sparsely populated area, and we need towers, and we need other things to get us the internet service, then we are going to go to these companies that can offer that, and they would have to build new towers and pay fees to have that done. Perhaps we should look at the, you know, using a tax levy as the base for having proper internet service throughout the community, and that we waive the fees for the services to ensure that everyone is provided these services.
I mean, as far as the fees, oh, Ken wants to say something.
I'm sorry, again, I will say, we are regulating, we are not impeding. If those companies thought for a minute they could make money, they'd have those towers up. They're choosing not to supply it to us. We, with this ordinance, are not infringing in any way, shape, or form, and we ask that question over and over again. We are just regulating. We want to know what they're doing. We are not impeding on their, they're the ones who are making the choice not to supply it. Whether that regulation is there or not, it's not going to happen unless they want to do it, all right? So we are not impeding their ability to service us.
It's, I mean, as far as the fees, the planning, we lose money on all our fees. So what was asked this time around, like, I think maybe Sue explained it, was that, or no, it was Don, they asked staff to come back with an honest estimate of what we thought it took time-wise for the zoning administrator to process these. And so I talked to the zoning administrators, the $500 fee went in place in 2004, so that didn't get raised for the 10 years that that ordinance was still good. And it was the zoning administrator's professional opinion, based on the time it took for them to process those applications, that we didn't even come close to covering their time, let alone, you know, the front office staff time and everything else that might be involved. That being said, again, we lose money on most of our fees. The planning department, not even a quarter of our budget, is covered by the fees that we take in, so all the taxpayers are paying for a lot of our services, whether they're using them or not. So if you want the fee to stay the same, fine, then, I mean, just know that we're probably not breaking even on it, but that's, that's fine, it's your decision.
Go ahead, did you want to say something, Grant?
Yeah, briefly, the $3,000 fee did not come out of the air. It's what the statute pegs as an appropriate fee, so we can charge anything from $3,000 down to zero.
Anybody else? Wow. Chuck.
Yeah, I have a question for Grant. Seeing that you anticipate that there may be some legal questions against what we're doing, how close do you think that we are to working something out with these people, avoiding litigation? And if we did have to litigate, would you do it, or would we pass it on to somebody else with a law firm?
Unless the insurance carrier agreed to cover it under our policy, we do all our own litigation, we've never retained outside counsel. And I think it's safe to say we've winnowed down the differences in terms of the quote-unquote "legal arguments" as much as we can, and I think we highlighted some of the areas that are of concern, the wetlands, the shorelands, the public safety communications corridors. I think those are things that the, I can't speak for the RPC, but my impression was the RPC, there wasn't any give on those sort of public safety and health type issues, so. And I, I'm fairly certain that we will fare well in litigation. Those that represent those other companies believe otherwise, and there wouldn't be attorneys if we all agreed all the time, so.
Darn. Don.
Yes, let me reiterate that if this is passed, that any town board can make their own regulations and let them have the responsibility of towers.
Correct.
Okay. John, you have something else?
Not having a chance for the concerned parties involved to speak to the county board as a whole, I was wondering if this could possibly be tabled, have the concerned parties come in and give us their explanation on why they are going through all this effort to have this changed.
The state stat, well, and again, the way this budget bill was written in 2013, 2015, it said you had to adopt these regulations if you were going to adopt regulations under your zoning authority. State statute, as far as zoning law, says that the county resource planning committee holds the hearing on the matter, and then makes the recommendation to the county board.
Yeah, I think what, the way we, correctly if I'm wrong, the procedure we used, you'd have to postpone it or send it back to committee, and then the committee would have to hold another public hearing, and then the county board people, if they're that interested, would go to that public hearing to see what is, have a public hearing here. I don't think we've ever had one that I could recall.
And a couple of county board members did come to that hearing, because you all got notice of it.
Two things, one, what the statute allows on an mandatory petition is that the county board may enact the ordinance as drafted by the zoning agency or with amendments, or it may deny the petition for amendment, or it may refuse to deny the petition as recommended by the agency, in which case it will re-refer the petition to the agency with directions to draft an ordinance. So the options are fairly limited. And I'll point out, I think, without possibility of contradiction, since the 5969 has been enacted, and it's been decades, there has never been public comment or public hearing at a county board level. The public hearing has always been held at the, in our county, the resource planning committee level. Other counties have different zoning agencies. Some counties allow the public hearings to be in front of the agency itself. And then there's a report to the county board, the subunit of the county board that participated in the drafting of the ordinance, the discussion with staff, had the public hearing, and then the follow-up deliberations, then makes a recommendation to the county board, and the county board deliberates, as we are now. It would be completely contrary to what's, I think, ever been done to allow public comment to county board, and what you would in effect be doing is creating a second realm, second set of hearings, where you would have the hearings that are provided for by statute before the resource planning committee, and then come to county board, and there could be other public comment. The benefit of having public comment at the resource planning committee in the public hearing is that body is, because of its size, five members, and its interaction with the planning department is better able to digest that public comment, see, you know, verify what's true, what's not true, and then come up with a considered recommendation. And Mariah recited the history, there was almost a year leading up to the point where the ordinance was drafted, there was a notice public hearing before the ordinance was sponsored, there was a meeting, not hearing, there was a public hearing where the ordinance was fully vetted, and then there were two days of deliberation by the resource planning committee. So I think that's one of those arguments that's been made by assertion, that simply because some folks are saying we didn't have an opportunity to present our views, there were probably no fewer than five or six opportunities, and, you know, at some point you have to say sort of is enough enough, and I think it would be a complete mess if we opened the entire county board up to hearing on zoning amendment petitions, and we'd have to change the way we're doing things, and it may not even comply with the statute, so.
Okay, let's, comment, but Leo hasn't talked, let's not rehash what's been said.
Well, my real concern is that some of our regulations that we have in government are all too inclusive, and we further restrict the entrepreneurial aspect of what goes on. What I'm hearing today is a whole bunch of gobbledygook that doesn't make a whole bunch of sense. I, too, have received all kinds of letters and phone calls, most recently this morning from Dr. Linda Underwood from Sylvester School, that really makes the most sense. And what she is saying is, don't further restrict our effort to educate our people with the services we provide. Now, if you want to send it in the mail, by US Postal, go right ahead. But for them to invest in all the money they have to educate their people, I think this would be a slap in the face.
Mr. Chairman, we've already said we're making it less restrictive, so my esteemed colleague is wrong on his take on it.
Okay. John, Ninus, he hasn't spoken yet.
I really wasn't done.
Oh, okay. Go ahead then, Leo, finish.
I believe he has to go to work. My question is, if this is not passed today, or if it's referred back to committee, who then becomes the hearing board? It's been my assumption, anyway, if we turn it down, that it comes before this board as a hearing, somewhere down the line. Mr. Counselor, or?
No, the county board is not the hearing body, under our current rules of the statutes.
But anyway, I would just encourage everybody to put their thinking hats on and turn this down.
John.
Does anybody have a number on what it would cost to taxpayers if we waived the fees? Because if there's one thing in this county needs, it's internet service. If you want to grow, you've got to have internet service. What would it cost if we waived all fees? Then there wouldn't, there wouldn't be this discussion.
So it would all be zero?
Yes.
I'd have to go run the numbers on how many towers have been authorized? And again, I don't know how many have gone up in the last two years, because we haven't had any regulations. I mean, it's not going to be inexorable, but I mean, if we're going to, if we're losing money on $500 in application, we're going to lose money on zero. I don't, I can't, I can't give you an answer.
We're not going to break the bank?
I don't know how many towers are going up a year. I mean, when it was mostly larger towers that were going up, I would say there was a large handful. These smaller towers, I mean, I know originally, when we talked to the smaller local company a couple of years ago, when they wanted that height exemption raised, I remember the number, 27 to 30 towers that they wanted to put up. I don't know if those were new, or if that's what they wanted to do total. I think that number has gone up, because I think they've realized that they can't serve some of these areas easily, and they need more towers. But, I mean, I don't, you're certainly not talking tens of thousands of dollars, but I can't give you an exact number.
Kathy, then Sue, then Paul.
I just want to make a comment. I don't think anybody in the planning department's going to lose a job if we don't have the permits, or if we lower the permits, or leave them the way they were before. I don't think it's going to make any difference on the number of people that are there.
Can you tell me about our budget?
Go ahead, Susan.
I just want, a procedural comment. We have the fees separated out in a separate resolution.
Correct.
So we're going to have to vote on this stuff separately. If it was the will of this body that we do want to regulate, then, and if you've had your questions answered, that what the regulations are asking, aside from the permit, are not too honorous to expect, that will be voted on separately. We could address, if your inclination was to take Mr. Ninus's suggestion and just waive the fees in an effort in investing in, you know, internet service in the county, that's a whole separate thing, and could be debated with amendments to that later.
And just for context, the fees have always been $500, so if you were, if it was the will of the board to reduce the recommended fee from $1,000 to $500, then one could reasonably posit that there is no fiscal impact on those seeking to construct the mobile towers and the accessory structures. So I think really that's kind of your range of things, in terms of.
Well, except for the company that will now be regulated that previously chose not to be.
Paul.
And I just wanted to add that I had a conversation with Steve Sullivan, our town chair, who mentioned that there were about six or seven towers that he knew about or had been involved with installing in Nassau Wapbee.
Don.
Yeah, well, I have two things. First of all, I think it's a good idea to waive the fees. Secondly, point of order for Grant, what if it's a 10 to 10 tie?
It won't be. Oh, yes, it could be, yes. Negative vote wins, right?
Yeah, it fails.
Yeah, it fails.
Thank you.
That's right. Go ahead, Steve.
A scenario, I'm going to go back to this, because I think this is what it comes down to. So, the homeowner decides they need internet service. They move up here, they build a house, and they can't get internet, so they decide to put up a 50-foot TV tower, put their antenna on top of their tower, and then ask for a local provider to give them internet service, so that provider puts a receiving antenna up for broadband. Okay, 50-foot tower, we're not talking a huge tower. Okay, then the broadband company comes along and says, hey, you've got six neighbors around you that, you know, would like to get internet, and if we could put a transmitter on top of your tower, your 50-foot tower, to give your six neighbors broadband, you know, I'm going back to, Ken's mentioned that, you know, it's not more restrictive, but is it more restrictive?
That scenario that you're, well, because of the height that you used in that example, that's, wait, let me think for a second. I don't think that would be regulated any differently under these rules than it would have under the old.
When does the regulation come into fact, because of the?
Because it's not, it's not just for private use, so.
But, okay, I understand, but let's say it's six months later, a year later, the tower's been there, now how do you, how does the provider come back, and what is that going to cost?
Well, if there's a tower that's already there, and somebody is just putting an antenna on it, does it turn into a Class II colocation at that point?
Class I or Class II, it just depends.
Because, I mean, yeah, so it would be regulated, but I don't think that, and there would be a fee, but I don't think you'd be prevented from doing that.
So what is it going to cost? What is it going to cost the?
Apparently, zero is what you guys are looking at.
Oh, so that goes back, there's no other, there's no other things other than that fee?
No, I mean, again, the company, if, I guess if it's going to turn into a tower that's more public rather than just for you, then we are going to need the proof of insurance from the company, and the proof that when that tower no longer serves you guys, because now you've got satellite beaming down providing it, or whatever. now you've got satellite beaming down providing it, or whatever, that they.
But this is on, this is the landowner's tower. So you're going to require the landowner to do these things?
No, the company that's putting the antenna up is the applicant for the new piece of equipment.
That's not the example. But that's not what I'm, I'm just saying, they're just putting a transmitter, which is a small little thing, on top of the owner's tower.
Right. The company, the internet company, or phone company, or whatever it is.
So now, so now that tower, the landowner's, I mean, I, I question that because I think the, it's the owner's tower. So who is going to be put on the spot?
The person putting the new piece of equipment on that tower is going to have to come to us and see what they're doing, and whether it's a Class I or a Class II co-location. And the statute defines, and it's in the ordinance that defines what a Class I versus a Class II is. In the example you're providing, if it was exactly the way you're describing, it would be a Class II co-location, which is basically filling out an application form, again, showing you're not in a public safety communication corridor, that you're not in a wetland. And then that would be the lower of the fees, which, if the fees are going to be zero, it'll be really low.
Go ahead.
I, I, that's, that's a perfect example. I mean, perfect example. And I am in support of that, because that's what's going to grow this county. We're not going to get the big dogs here to put cell towers over the community, nor do any of us want that. But let's just say that the example he's talking about is the company in the county that is doing this, and it's the way it's going to go, I believe. So with that example, I'm in support of that, but you keep going back to the term "regulated." When you say the word "regulated," what exactly is that meaning? They want to, you want to know, the county wants to know where it's at, how high it is, proof of insurance, that sort of stuff, that it's not interfering. That's fine and dandy. I'm, I'm okay with that sort of stuff, as long as there's no cost to that sort of stuff. If that's the will of this, then so be it.
I'm concerned of what it's going to, how it's going to hamper either the owner allowing the company to do this on their tower, because that's the first thing. If the owner's going to be put in some situation, the owner's going to say, forget it, I'm not going to worry about my neighbors, I got internet, that's all I care about.
I don't think, Grant can pipe up if he thinks I'm misspeaking as far as the statutes. I don't think that they would be precluded from doing that. It just is going to qualify as either a Class I or a Class II co-location in order to do that. And then, like you said, we need to know, the information would be who's owning and operating, whatever the new thing is that's going on that tower. But that's the more, the more minor of the application processes. And the lower of the fees, whatever it is that you're going to pick.
Yeah, for a Class II co-location, the statute reads the lesser of $500 or the amount charged by political subdivision. So in your example, let's assume that we set the fee at $500, and there are five residences serviced by that. $100 is not unreasonable to pay to have internet service to your house. It's a one-time fee. And if we decided to set it lower than that, or zero, the judgment of, I think, the staff and the RPC in going through this was that it wasn't going to have the impact of impeding this type of service. And if we're purely talking about cost, that'll be addressed in a resolution that'll be considered if this ordinance is enacted.
And let me, let me clarify one thing, too, as far as Steve's example. If someone wants to put an antenna, whether it's serving, well, let's say an antenna that's going to serve multiple properties on top of an existing structure, like a water tower, or a barn, or whatever, we're not going to make, that structure doesn't need to meet a setback. That, that barn doesn't need to be 1.1 times its height from the property line. So I think the example that you're providing, I think it would just be a class co-location.
Well, these are existing, you know, something that's existed.
Right. You can, and I'm, I'm using that as an example because we would do the same thing, I think, with towers, with existing towers that are out there. Those are already up there. If someone's going to co-locate something on those, they don't need to be moved.
The procedure we're going to use now, we're going to vote on the, the report, and then it's going to go immediately to the ordinance. So there'll be two votes. We, we don't have a motion on the ordinance, but we'll take the first vote, and then we'll go to the, does anybody else got anything to add that hasn't been said? I can't believe. John, you have something or not?
I did, I did have one more question for Mariah, if she can answer this. With all these perspectives of new towers going up, be it tall, small, short, fat, whatever, how do we ensure that none of these towers would interfere with our law enforcement, EMS, fire communication systems that we currently have in the county?
That's one of the application requirements for a tower that is going to be covered by the ordinance. So they need to check with the Information Systems Department and make sure they're not in one of those communication corridors. And that, as I think Grant said earlier, is one of the things that actually was objected to, which the Resource Planning Committee thought was, it just, it makes sense to have them check on that.
Go ahead, Don.
One last time, Mariah. What happens if we don't have any communication?
If you don't have any?
Not.
Well, anybody could put any tower serving either one or numerous people up to 199 feet anywhere they wanted.
Okay, stop right there. In case of John's point of the police, emergency services, and so forth, who's going to regulate that if there's no ordinance for it?
Nobody.
So they can put something that's going to interfere with the emergency services and the police department?
They could. I mean, I would imagine that most of those companies would presumably check on that, but there wouldn't be anybody requiring them to.
Doesn't it remove us then to have something in place?
Again, I think most of those companies would probably check on that, because most of them aren't going to spend the money to do something like that, but it's possible that they could. And like Sue said earlier, right now, there's nothing preventing anybody from putting a tower up to 199 feet right on your lot line, next to your house.
Anybody else? Ah. Who go to the voter board and either vote the report up or down?
Well, it's just a matter, we heard it, essentially, right?
It's a set of, we've received them before, it's not a vote.
You can't vote no.
I don't know how you can say no to what we heard.
What'd you say? I didn't really hear it.
What did you say?
Could you repeat that?
You can start over.
Just the report so far.
And it has passed on a vote of 17 yes, and three no, and one absent. So now, does someone want to make a motion to approve the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, after that long debate, just to discuss the report, I'm almost, although it did pass, I'm almost afraid, but I will make a motion to accept or adopt ordinance number 2015-10 for the towers.
We're going to take a break after we vote, by the way, I'm going to tell you. Second by David. We're going to take a break after our vote. Anybody else want to add anything that hasn't been said?
I would like to add one thing.
Go, Roy.
Go ahead, Roy.
My only comments is that I got calls, received calls from citizens that are talking about the fee, and that's where the most concern is. So in my understanding by, with this ordinance we're talking about right now, the fee is not being considered, it'll be considered at a later time?
Well, there's a resolution on the agenda. That's why I asked Dan to switch the ordinance.
Seventy-nine resolutions will take care of the fees.
Very good. Thank you.
We're going to go next to the, well, we're going to take a break after this vote.
I, I wanted to add one thing, which we probably didn't say earlier. Grant rattled off the, the options that the Resource Planning Committee had as far as recommending the regulations to you as proposed, recommending a modified version, and then the options that you have before you. The Resource Planning Committee did recommend a modified version of the ordinance. So under the state zoning statutes, if it were to pass today, that means that it doesn't actually go into effect for 41 days. I don't know whether that was mentioned or not.
Joel? Another question. So something, somebody is wanting to do something, and I'm not, I can't even give a specific example, but it's something that is raising a potential flag on, on this project. Is there an avenue, I'm assuming there is, where that individual, that business, that company, that whoever, can come forward to the RPC, to the department, and if it requires a variance, or a petition, or a hearing, or something, there's mechanisms in place for those very specific examples if they ever arose?
You mean something that?
Granted, something that was not definite in the rules or regulations or a way of?
Are you talking about something that's in process theoretically right now?
In general.
Oh. Well, I guess.
Is there a mechanism to do something that is not being, what, what he is saying, an appeal process, if, if Grant and, and an attorney are having one of these debates where they agree to disagree, and it gets to the point where it's not going to go to court, but can they, can they petition the RPC on approval of something?
You could, well, there's a couple of, you could propose a text amendment to change the actual wording of the chapter, or depending on exactly what the issue was, there might be some things where they could apply it to the Board of Adjustment for variance. I'm not sure the statute's.
That's what I'm asking. Is there a mechanism?
Or, or they could appeal the, if they feel like we're interpreting something incorrectly, you can appeal our decision to the Board of Adjustment.
So there is a mechanism, that's all I'm asking.
Yes.
There is. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, go to the voter board and vote yes or no, then we'll take a break.
Do you have charters?
Do you have charters?
Yeah.
Trying to find your name.
Helen.
Push it again. Did it work?
District seven.
That has passed on 13 yes, seven no, with one absent. Take a 10-minute break. Go ahead, Chuck.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I, I really appreciate the debate that went on, on the floor for this thing here, because when I came in, I was voting the other way. But with the education of being told that it can be changed, modifications can be done, I want to thank the RPC and the board members, because I know you had your hands full with this one.
Well, John Nynas wanted us to have more debates than we had one today.
Another one, you're saying that you.
Am I right, John?
No, he.
Okay, we'll reconvene. We're going to go to the ordinance, the report on the cleanup zoning ordinance text amendment regarding telecommunications towers. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
There a second? Second by David. Anigo. Go ahead, Mariah.
This is easy.
Yeah.
This is basically just to reflect what you just did, which is creating a new chapter and then repealing the old ordinance. So we just need to clean up the references in the zoning ordinance that remain to the previous, now obsolete, ordinance. I can go into more detail if you want, but that's basically, no, somebody said, please, no.
Everybody understand it?
You're, you're at, um.
Go ahead. They don't understand it.
The, oh, page, uh.
Twenty.
Go back from where you just were, before the ordinance. It's page 22. Well, okay.
Twenty.
Yeah, 20 is the actual, the report. So basically, by getting rid of, formally, even though it hasn't been in effect for two years, by repealing the old standalone telecommunications tower ordinance that we had, and then creating a new chapter in the zoning ordinance, there are places in the zoning ordinance where the language needs to be cleaned up to reflect that there is now a chapter in the zoning ordinance as opposed to a standalone ordinance.
Everybody understand it now? So on the report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. Now we're zipping. Someone want to make a?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt the mandatory zoning ordinance 2015-9.
I'll second it.
Okay. Don City. Is there any questions? If not, we'll go to the voter board as soon as she gets caught up here. There.
I am.
Go to your voter board and vote yes or no.
Somebody's waiting.
John?
Hold on a minute.
Fisher and City.
It didn't take. Okay.
What?
Yeah. That has passed, 18 yes, one no, and.
Well, it's not taken. Mine says absent.
I bet you you voted no.
No, I voted no.
Well, let's see what we.
Nassau. We're trying to stand up to the Navy's expectations.
You mean, stand down? Ooh. Ouch. Okay. I just got it. I just got it.
Page 21. Yeah. She passed.
Do not.
Should you take a vote, huh?
No.
Okay, there. Okay, everybody vote over again. We have to have a recorded vote on this, so. Okay. Short-term memory?
We're denying, uh.
Leo, I'm busy. Leo gets a chance to change his vote.
You got to vote again. Gotta watch it, you started.
We're going to see what you do. Everybody got to keep voting until I change mine?
Yeah.
That has passed on 18 yes, two no, one absent. Okay, we're going to go to the resolutions now. Approval of donation, Dark County Board of Supervisors, Dark County Sheriff's Department, Dare Program. Charles, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2015-76.
Second. Okay, second by Dick Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next one, approval of the non-native invasive plant species control ducts unlimited donation.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2015-77, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, your second. Second by Randy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. The year, year-end closeout of the general fund. David, make a motion.
Chairman, make a motion. We approve resolution 2015-78, 2014 year-end closeout to general fund.
Okay, there's a second. Second by Kathy. This one, we'll go to the voter board, because it's got to be counted. Needs two-thirds. Is there any discussion? Ready? Okay, go to the voter board and vote yes or no. Chuck? That has passed, 20 yes, one absent. Next item, planning department fees.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution 2015-79.
Second.
With some anticipated discussion.
Second.
Second by David. Okay, go ahead. Mariah, I suppose you can start us over, though.
I, I think we've already really talked about a lot of this already. The fees that have been in place since 2004, it's $500 for, and I'm trying to find the page, you guys already mind it. $500 for a new tower, and 50 for adding an antenna. We need to change the titles of those types of activities because they are called different things under the statutes now. And then, as discussed earlier, the Resource Planning Committee had recommended that you consider a $1,000 fee for new communication towers, and a $250 for a minor modification, which includes a co-location of an antenna. And then, I guess it's up to you what you want to do. I understand the concern about costs and everything else. I guess, I personally don't think that it's a good idea to have a zero fee, if you want to stick with what we have. And then I think, as Grant said earlier, you're really not changing the fees for anybody. That would be what I think is the most logical, but it's up to you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Dave.
Ten, but close enough. Yeah, we've been here a long time. Based on the past conversation we've had concerning the fees and people's concern about it, I don't think we need to change it, but I do understand the discussion. I'll make a motion, we reduce those fees from that 1,000, go back to the 500. And the second one, where it's 50, for 250, let's make that, instead of 250, let's make that 100. So 500 for the first one, and 100 for the second one.
Get more detailed than that. But Class I is where you're actually substantially modifying, and they define what substantially modifying is, so that you're increasing the height by more than a certain percentage or over a certain amount. I can find the exact language if you want, but that's basically the difference.
Thank you.
And my understanding, from reading the statutes and everything else, is that a Class I co-location is almost the same as putting up a new tower, because you have to do enough new engineering and new additions to the tower that it becomes that much taller.
Go ahead, Ken.
Mr. Renagel, I agree with you 100%, but I'm making that motion for the change to show good faith on the part of the county, that we are not... That's gouging any stretch, but it's a token gesture of good faith, and that's what I'm looking at.
And I do understand and expect that to be answered. My issue is, is that we did a strong review ahead of time, and this is... We did our due diligence on the taxpayer side.
Anybody else? Don City?
I gotta ask Mariah a question. Are these fees the only fees? If somebody wants to put up a new tower, what about an engineering study or something like that?
You're not required to have an engineering study. So, if we... The modified ordinance that you recommended to the county took out the requirement that engineering information be provided about the possibility of somebody co-locating upon a new tower, that requirement is gone. An applicant can choose to do an engineering study that shows that their tower can collapse in a smaller radius and therefore not meet the required setback, but otherwise, there's no engineering study required.
Does a state require one?
I don't... I don't think so. I mean, the people that manufacture towers, those are engineered structures, and so those come with, you know, certain certifications and stamps on them, but I don't... I'm not sure what you mean as far as what the state would require.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? No, actually, this is an amendment to the resolution, so go to your voter board and vote yes or no, the reduction that was proposed.
This is what you change fees, Dan?
That's to reduce the...
Hmm?
No, it's an amendment. Kathy?
$500.
Kathy?
$500.
That has passed on a motion of 18 yes and two no and one absent. So, now, motion to approve the resolution amended.
So...
Well, we got it, it's ready, seconded, et cetera. This could be... Okay. Use the voter board. Okay, use the voter board to vote yes or no. Any discussion? Anybody wanna ask any more questions? Go to the voter board and vote yes or no.
No, you're not.
That has passed, 19 yes, one no. Next item is appointment of... To the committees and commissioners and boards by myself and Ken. Some of the appointments are his, some of them are mine. Someone wanna make a motion to approve them? Motion by Don City, your second. Randy Alstead. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has passed. Personnel request for 2016... Somebody wanna make a motion? David, make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve resolution 2015-81, the new position request for 2016, which is an increase of ours reclassifications and new positions.
I'll second it.
Okay, second by Chuck Brandon. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Think we wore them out.
I think so.
That's one way of doing it.
We got that door at 1:00.
Okay. Any new business? I don't know of any oral reports. Anybody have any questions on the minutes? Anybody have any questions on the vouchers? Next county board meeting is October 27th at 9:00 a.m. Remind everybody that they're gonna be offering flu shots again before the meeting, starting supposedly at 8:00 o'clock or something like that, right? Kathy, be somewhere on there. You can also bring your spouse, if you'd like, to get them done. Don City?
You wanna mention again the highway tour?
I was just gonna say that.
At 1:00, there's gonna be a tour of the highway shop that is gonna include a number
of architectural firms. I would encourage everybody to go to see what it looks like, what might happen to it. Sooner or later, we're gonna make a decision on doing something with that building, and this is the start going down that road, whether it be...
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further business to transact, I'm making a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it.
My God. You don't wanna let me finish talking then?
No, you're done.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I do. I do.